I'd like to call to order Monday, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council meeting to order at seven P. M. Please rise in the place of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation, a God indivisible, for its interests as well.
Thank you. Our roll call today, Tyler Miller is remote and the rest of us are present. Thank you. I did want to make one change to our agenda. We have stricken number four CGI video update off of there. The information he didn't get the information that he needed, so we're going to move it to December eleventh. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Yes, Councilor Santiago. Set up the agenda with the changes of striking number four. Any seconds?
One second.
Thinking about Councilor Holmes, any question, discussion? Any none? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes. Before we do public comment, see Jeff here, I really wanted to thank Jeff for his Halloween, putting all his effort and putting Halloween together was a smashing success. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That was my public comment. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearings. Members of the public addressing council requested to give their name to the residents. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes. We're limited thirty minutes total. They should ask first, do we have any public comment? Any none? We do have one. If you want to step, usually we fill out the pink form, just get me your name and what you want to talk. Yep. I was there. Yeah, go ahead and step up, just give us your name, city of residence, and then really good into the microphone so online people can hear you. And then afterwards, if you just fill out that information, give it to Susan, that way if we need to follow up, we have your information. Go ahead.
My name is William Saintherb. I live in Scappus, been here thirty years. Recently retired, that's why I have time for meetings.
Good, we have a couple committees, I think that we could, let's start a clock.
But anyway, so a couple of concerns after being a good portion of my adult life here. Number one is, obviously, the cost of living is high, going up, and now being on a fixed income, it's, well, you know, you kind of think about where everything's going. So the water and sewer rates have increased again. It wasn't that long ago, at least it doesn't seem that way to me, where I was paying hundred and ten dollars for two months, and now I'm paying hundred and twenty-nine for one water and sewer. Anyway, so I'm just trying to understand why there isn't, I know you guys have heard this before, but a senior citizen discount. And number two, why, like my neighbor, there's six people living in their house, and they pay the same sewer rate as I do with one person. So it kind of seems like, well, I know I'm not producing the wastewater. Family of six is, you know, and that goes to our treatment plant. You know, so I'm trying to raffle with that. And then we're not talking a huge amount of money, but every little bit, you know, is something. And so you don't think about it when you're making, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand a year, but when you're down on the bottom, then you start realizing what senior citizens are up against. So, and the other thing is the middle school on what? They live on what? And old driving on that road when children are present. Never see enforcement. I know there's only, what, three or four of you? I never see you guys out there regulating speed. I see that little trailer once in a while now, but there doesn't seem to be any enforcement. And I mean, these guys with these big diesel pickups are blowing through there at forty-five miles an hour with no exhaust. The kids, like Halloween, they were, they were blowing up and down that road with kids out there. So that's another concern.
We're addressing it, we're just waiting to get the patient back from the speed trailer. We have more officers coming back next. That's going to be, that's one of our priorities.
Yeah, but, you know, it is a concern, you know, it's a
You're not the first person to bring
Yeah, I believe that. We got a lot of, a lot of young guys with mufflers and like that, picks your windows. That's all I have.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Appreciate it, William. Thank you. Yeah, if you could just get us maybe an email and a name, and then appreciate it. And now we are darker an hour earlier every night, right? Okay, thank you. Seeing no more public comments, we will move on to the consent agenda. Today, we are looking at October sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council work session minute meetings. Meeting minutes in October sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council meeting minutes. Looking for someone to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion made by Councilor Holmes, any second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacobs, any discussion? Any none? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Onto new business. We were asked, and I'm sorry, we didn't get this done last month, but we are looking at a proclamation to recognize indigenous people. Indigenous Peoples' Day is October ninth. Let me make sure I got all the dates on here correctly. This is the sixth day of November. Okay. So recognizing October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the City Council of the City of Scappus acknowledges the rich history of this land, which has been inhabited by the indigenous peoples for countless generations, including the indigenous tribes of the Pacific Northwest. Whereas the City of Scappus recognizes the enduring presence and contributions of indigenous peoples to our community and the nation as a whole. And whereas we acknowledge the injustices and hardships faced by indigenous peoples throughout history, including forest removal from ancestral lands and efforts to assimilate their cultures. And whereas we believe in the importance of self-reflection, truth, accountability, and addressing this history in working together with indigenous nations towards a better future for all. And whereas the City of Scappus proudly joins the growing number of cities and towns across the United States in recognizing the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, providing an opportunity to reflect upon, learn about, and celebrate the resiliency and enduring presence of indigenous peoples in our community. And now therefore be it resolved that Joe Backus, Mayor of the City of Scappus, along with the members of Scappus City Council, hereby do recognize October ninth as Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourage all residents to honor and respect the indigenous peoples of our community, both past and present, who have enriched our city with their history, culture, and contributions. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the cause, the seal of the City of Scappus to be affixed, done at the City Hall in City of Scappus on Oregon on sixth day of November, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you. Thank you, Jeanette. Help on that. Native American. So I'll have to look, is it always October ninth, or is it going to always be the
The Monday.
Monday. We will recognize that every year going forward. Okay, moving on to number three. We all had, we received a letter from the Columbia County Fire Defense Board on October sixteenth. We talked last meeting and asked for our representation for some help to craft a letter in response. And today we have legal counsel Ashley Driscoll with us. Do you want to, we have a letter in here, did you want to respond or talk at all about this letter, Ashley?
Good evening, Scappus City Council, Ashley Driscoll, City Attorney's Office. Mayor, you covered it. The city received the letter on October sixteenth. The State Council discussed the city's potential response at our last meeting. I took notes on the city's desired response and was directed to craft a letter. That letter is in your packet, so you can have additional discussion about that letter. If there's any changes that any member of the council would like to make, there can be a motion for amendment. However, if this letter or any amended letter meets the council's need, needs, you would just need to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign and send the city's response letter to the Columbia County Fire Defense Board.
Thank you. Any discussion question? I personally, I appreciate the letter. I think it, it's to what I believe and feel. So I think I, I don't personally have any changes at this time. Any else, anything else, any changes? I'm hoping we can work through this and continue to work in a relationship that we have moving forward. Seeing no discussion, I'm looking for a motion then to accept and authorize the mayor to sign and send this letter. Council Santiago, you were saying? Is I, first, any seconds? Second by Councilor Jacobs. Any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thanks, Council. Have a good evening.
Thank you too. We have crossed off number four, we'll move on to that, and now we're on to five. Scappus Adventure Festival, two thousand and twenty-three, post-event report, Assistant to City Manager Isaac Webman, take it away.
Right, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me for you tonight. On October second, I came to talk about this year's Adventure Festival, and I was asked to kind of go to our citizen committees and ask for some feedback about the event and a couple of categories. And my understanding was that you were interested in understanding what the committees thought about this Adventure Festival, two thousand and twenty-three, the event generally, and then kind of looking at potentially rebranding it. It's one of the potential learning points from this year came out, which is that the name Adventure Festival doesn't really align with what this event is. So I went to the Economic Development Committee meeting and the Parks meeting in October, and I did get some feedback, but things also took a different kind of turn while I was at those meetings. I'm going to go through the general feedback first, so you have that information, and I'll talk a little bit about other kind of way that things turned when I was in front of the committees and what I was hearing. So I think the biggest feedback that I got was that a committee members felt that the community in the event was lacking. So there were some suggestions about, really about how to bring the community back into the event. There were concerns that it wasn't community oriented, that I tried to suss out what, what was meant by that, but it was a little difficult. It sounds like there were some people that were interested in potentially running this event themselves. Blinded with that also was a feeling that the event was too big or too expensive, that the sponsorship tiers that were proposed were too expensive for the community. Kind of that they feel like the event should be scaled back. Same time, a lot of people were really positive. They said it was great to be able to go out and get food that we don't have here. It was great to go out and have a bunch of free activities. It's great to go spend time with my friends and my family, people I haven't seen in years, and they liked that aspect of the event. They felt that generally like Touch Truck was good, that nation would run, or not coordination, but the integration would run, Neo was important. But then on the other hand, there was this kind of larger, sort of undefined, lack of community. So there were some suggestions from multiple parties about how that could be addressed. Even JJ said she would, she's a member of the Parks Committee, she said she was interested in potentially taking this on. I kind of asked her some follow-up questions and said, okay, well, what, what does that mean? And it, what I heard was that she was interested in basically taking, honestly, taking it over as a handoff, but doing a community festival where we wouldn't necessarily be doing it. So being like the owner of the event. She mentioned that she'd been talking with the library, like I called Jeff and talked with him a little bit about that. So I'm not really sure what that looks like. She was interested in potentially, I think, my understanding is, coming to do some kind of a proposal for what that might look like. I think that, you know, in, in the staff report, I wrote a lot about the history of how this event, about why we're here, why we use Treadway events. And I think that still stands true today, and really what it is, is that we just don't really have the staff time to commit to having somebody on staff manage and coordinate. So back in twenty-one, when we did the centennial, we had an intern essentially run the event. We had a very large group of committee members who were very interested in helping out in all the different areas. We started with twenty-five or thirty folks, that quickly dwindled to five or seven. And about eight months later, after we had convened this committee, there was still a lot of work left to be done. We had just approved a logo. Eight months after meeting, we did not have a sponsorship kit. Bands had just been signed, they're still, you know, there was a lot of these bigger pieces that, you know, we've heard from Economic Development Committee that need to be in play in October, November that we're missing. And so, while we did have, you know, handful of folks who were doing a lot of work and amazing work, you know, and the whole history tent, and, you know, Mike and his wife made the parade happen. You know, Jeff was involved. There's all these folks that were doing different things. It still wasn't enough to get everything across the finish line. So he went out, as we typically do, we looked for three different bids, we found an event company. Based on their ratings, kind of interviewed the different parties, and on Treadway, they came in, got everything lined up, did all, took all the admin work. And after the event, came back to council, and council totally indicated, yes, we'd like to do this again, went back, contracted with Treadway again, with council's full budget, et cetera, et cetera. And that repeated last year's. So here we are again. Everything is very similar in terms of staff time. That, that intern spent pretty much their whole time at the city, about twenty-four to thirty hours a week on the event. Even with the community members, even with the sponsorship of the committees, the sponsorship committees, the subcommittees, all that. And then Treadway still had to come in at the end and help. So I think, I think from our perspective, you know, I think it's important to listen to the feedback. I think that regardless of how we move forward, I think it's going to be difficult for us to absorb much more. So from perspective right now, last year I spent about, in terms of the total time to put the event on, I spent maybe eight percent. Very, very. Couple coordination meetings, worked with Neil, incidental emails, fielding some phone calls, day of, I was there all the time, cleanup afterwards. That was really it. I didn't make, you know, I wasn't calling toilet companies, I wasn't coordinating vendors, I didn't have to do those kind of things. And so I think that that's probably the level of effort that we'd be able to give. Regardless of how this, you know, plays, whether this is a community group or not. Think that in talking with Brandon Treadway, who's the owner of Treadway, Vince, I think if council was interested in proposals going forward, you'd probably see something very similar to what, where we are at now, in terms of the size of the event. I'm not really sure their appetite for proposing a smaller event. Yes, I've said a lot.
Well, thank you. I'll go first because I've got this. I, I no, I, um, I really did enjoy the event, even though I, I was a little too big for the rides. I got to sit there and talk to a lot of people. I was hoping there was a dunk booth, but there wasn't. But I did really enjoy the event. I do really enjoy having a citywide event and the music and everybody get together. I think it is very important. I personally have trouble with spending the ninety thousand dollars, especially at this time when kind of new to this, but there's a lot of other things that we can be using that money for. So if, if we could keep that big event, but somehow find a way to pay for it, that's one thing. If we do have a big festival, I do agree, we need a planner. I don't think the city, the staff, like you said, the five percent, that would be about it. So we would really, I would really like to see a planner if we do that. The community event, I get that, it's, I would like to see the community more involved other than just going. But so what I was kind of thinking, you know, the other option is the city can sponsor and donate some money to an outside community of, group to do this. So I was like thinking that if, if I have talked to JJ and, and others, that maybe we look at, if she wants to come in and propose of what her option would be, and we can offer Treadway, and anybody else wants to come in and propose a plan, we could listen to it and, and see which way we want to go. I'm just one person with a feeling, and so I'm definitely looking for some advice feelings from all of us, because it's, it is important, I think, to have that community event, but there's a lot of different ways we can do it. Yes.
Make one point about the dollars. So, so while the event was budgeted at ninety thousand, the total event cost was almost a hundred and thirty. That was offset by sponsorship, so.
Yeah.
That's quite a bit more than that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if we're saying it's hard to get that funding, get it down to ten or twenty thousand out of our pocket, and that's kind of more where I'm in the lines, then, then it may not be an option. But for that amount of money, I would want, you know, much bigger event, much more people. That was my two cents. Santiago.
Oh, I was just going to say, I would point out too, that even during the centennial event where we actually were able to get a lot more donations than, you know, we have for subsequent years, the city still put in about twenty-three thousand plus some other direct payments and quite a bit of staff time and in-kind time as well. So even when we had an event where we had more sponsorships, we were still putting in a lot of time and effort, essentially a whole amount of an intern staff time plus a lot of cash. So just throwing that out there too, that there's probably not going to be a point at which this becomes a really necessarily cheap proposal by any means, but obviously less than, you know, what we're doing now would be great. I'd prefer that, but
But I understand Treadway, that's, their business model is this is where they're best and, and fit. Something smaller may not be, that's the way it is. But yeah, even at a hundred year, we were, we're not going to be able to do that every year, get seventy-five thousand dollars in sponsorships and as tight as it is now. So I'm willing to listen, they've been good, I think, and it's probably, you know, at least we go to them and say, here's just kind of what we're thinking. If you want to come and make a proposal, we'd be happy to listen. But I, I do talk into JJ. It is a big step, and I would really want to feel comfortable in it. It's a whole different thing. I can't compare it to an Adventure Fest because it wouldn't be that. It wouldn't be that hundred thousand dollar budget type event. But from hearing it, I think she would be willing to come and the group with the library backing it and the communities, you know, group. I'd like to at least listen to see what she had to say.
First, I'm going to give my perspective as one of the committee members, as a resident, that I was there in the twenty twenty centennial. It, my recollection is that we worked really hard to plan it. And Suzie, I have to give it up to Suzie Wilson. She got most of these sponsorships, and that's seventy-five thousand. Now, I experienced with Treadway coming in, and this is my experience at that time. They came in, they bamboozled, I felt like they bamboozled the current volunteers that were, were helping out. So that's why I feel like a lot of them left. They felt, they go buy Treadway. Ones that were, were there and stuck around were not treated very nicely. And, and this is my opinion, because I was there. It was not obvious at that time. I know you said that you worked, that you were open about working for Treadway. I, I just found out when meeting, when I was hearing, hearing. So being there, I didn't hear that you worked for Treadway. So that would have been helpful. But anyways, so we as a committee could put something together. I personally think as a council member, not think that ninety thousand dollars is, was worth that, that event. I wanted to come back into a local event. JJ and other community members have shared that they do want to participate. I would want to participate again and just helping out. Also think that there should be, whoever decides to put it together, it should be a budget committee within that group and to make sure that the, the costs and like a double check, not just one person taking care of the budgeting. I, I see that there's a problem about the years, that that's probably someone needed to be double checked on the budget. But that's my, that's my two cents. There's, I see that there's a report here, there's something that I do not agree with the report, being that I was there. Seems that the that it's described here, that Treadway doesn't want, they grew, and they just, that the current status of the event is the smallest that they would go. So it doesn't seem like our, our future events would even be comparable to something that they would be interested in. So I just don't see the fact that we should have invited them to a proposal, since we don't plan to spend another ninety thousand or a hundred thousand. So that
Would you be open to inviting them if we tell them that our, you know, this, our max is fifty thousand, and if you can plan something under that, then maybe come, or forty thousand, or any number? Invite them.
They made statements that no longer are looking for small community events to build their business. Have made statements to the effect that the Adventure Fest Festival is about the smallest event that they're willing to coordinate.
I mean, you would say as, we're, if, if we all agree that we want a smaller community event, if they have any proposal, any number, any dollar that they felt comfortable with, and they could come and propose it, but we're obviously thinking more of a small family, or a small, smaller budget, community event.
We can make it small and it can grow.
Anybody else have any other thoughts or feelings?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Holmes?
So I guess first question, if we had about six thousand folks, which I'm curious to see how that was kind of estimated. What was it scaled for? Because it was the capacity scaled for ten thousand, because it definitely didn't feel at capacity. So when they're building events, what's their target number?
I'll, I'll answer the question about metrics, how they calculate first. So there are formulas that are used to calculate traffic at events, specifically for events like ours, where you don't have a gate count to keep track. So what is, happens over the course of the day is that a sample is taken on a geographical area, someone literally goes out, they count spot. There is a lot of mathematically generated formulas that extrapolate that to the size of the event, and then it looks at average recidivism for people leaving or coming over time. Sample multiple times over the day and add the numbers together to get attendance. So they actually had, every couple hours went out, they went to different areas, counted up the people that were there. And it's not, it's not an area that's like, they don't necessarily pick like a high traffic area or a low traffic area. They pick different areas throughout the time of the events to make sure that they get a more accurate sample size. Count, put it, put it in the formula, it does its thing, and it says, okay, there's this many here at average, this many this area at this time for the X amount of hours, based on how many people come and leave events on average. They add it all together, get a number. So over the two days, for the, about fourteen event hours total we had, it was about six thousand. In terms of scaling, they don't necessarily go out to search for a number of people, but they do know, you know, here's how about, how many people came last time? Here's about how many people are in the community, here's how much more marketing we did. We think we're going to have this many people. You're right, we were not anywhere near. Assuming that, that event space is large. So while some of the rides for the kids were pretty backed up at times, I stood there for a couple hours and ran a ride. I can tell you that, you know, the line was no longer than four minutes, maybe five maximum. So there was still a lot of room, especially in Bear Garden, there was a lot of room at night. Even, even in the kid zone area, there was still a lot of empty space where people lined up. So I think, I think that their directive from council, and our directive for sure from council, was to increase attendance. So I think that they created a space where there could be up to how many people, but it was more about making sure that the same rides were there, get more marketing to get the word out more. That's why we saw things like the city flyer, extra billboards, more Facebook.
I did, one thing I did not put on, I mean, I was very excited to see the kids focus, you know, the free rides. I mean, to me, that's important. Giving something for the kids to do. I do like that it's free. I mean, you have the, the fair right after, you know, before now. It's nice. I really like that they focused on that. But it's still at the ninety thousand dollar. I mean, I, math is about eighteen dollars per kid if, if there were six thousand people, about what we spent per kid.
Yeah, and I guess my concern continuing to exclusively rely on Treadway potentially going forward would be that, you know, if if their kind of scale is operating at ten to twelve thousand people events, we're we are going to struggle to get there. And if we're not going to go ninety grand, we really do need to go down to something that's more appropriately scaled. I would like to see an event, I think by having more community, community members engaged, we have a chance to really highlight some of the things that um will make us as residents feel good about the community and celebrate the community, but also like showcase to others who might come and visit. Um, what's great about the community, what there is to do here, right? And bring back repeat visitors, which I think is something that's lacking. So I would be in favor of kind of doing more of a community oriented type of event. But yes, also recognize that there's no way that staff could take this on. I mean, that would be, you know, a a quarter FTE potentially like through the year. So is there a way to take some of the money from the budget and maybe hire a half-time person that could maybe do this plus something else? Is there a way to repurpose this money so that it can still be a sustaining event?
So there's still a lot of costs that you would have to still put out money for, right? So you're still talking, depending on how you want this to look, right? But I mean, how many things were we actually like purchasing versus, you know, because we we did bands, we had the porta potties, we had, you know. So there were several things that where we were actually making direct payments for. It wasn't just time organizing.
About at least fifty percent of the cost is going to be, so your rides are like.
We could scale back.
Thirteen uh power and rentals for like tables and chairs and things like that were another fifteen this year that went up. Um, so that right there is thirty. Yeah, that's right.
The point being, it's just if if we took that money and we hired someone part-time, you may have not a lot left essentially for any of these other costs that could be associated with the event. Um, so I know that, you know, part of the conversation when, you know, JJ and some of the community could come forward and say, hey, you know, we could do this and we could use a different organization. You know, we thought, well, we could, you know, we could be a sponsor or we could find some way to donate money to the events to help them out. Um, and then they could just take it over, um, run it and organize it however they think is most, you know, cost-effective and appropriate. And essentially they would just come to us if they needed a permit or something like that. Um, so that that is an option.
Yeah, I mean, I'm think I I it's a big deal to change this and and get rid of it. And I think um if an outside community does, I'd like to get a presentation to really get a sense that um I feel comfortable. It is going to be a different scaled-down event, I'm sure. I gotta uh expect that and it could grow over time. But um speaking her, I'd like to see it to kind of focus more, you know, around our new branding or whatever we're coming out with if they know by then. Um, and same with what we would have done this, we would have rebranded it to be more fit with our. So I would like if if I'd like to see if we could entertain maybe at one of our December meetings, um, offering her group to come and present. I mean, she has done some other things, so I feel comfortable at least listening. Um, and then off, you know, tell Treadway what we're thinking. And if they want to present something at a at a much lower scale, if they have any other options, tell them, yes.
Can we have another vendor besides Treadway?
I can most certainly look. I will tell you, um, that there are not a lot of vendor coordinators that operate in this area that are going to be like an actual business. So we might, we can look and see. I'll I'll do what I know. I can do what I normally do for these kind of things. I look for like three different vendors who do this kind of work, so it's sort of a little type of a deal. I will need a little more definition on the dollar amount though, because if I do find somebody who's like Treadway, they're going to say, okay, what what's your dollar amount? Because that's going to define, they will go all the way to that cap. That's why we saw that eighty-nine thousand nine. So I I will need a hard number. We're kind of looking at, or maybe a couple of numbers, you could say, okay, what can I get for six fifteen and thirty-five or something like that? That's kind of how they proposed initially is they said, here's what thirty, sixty and ninety.
So I think we need to understand how much are we willing to commit from a budgetary perspective to this type of event. We need to define that and then we, anyone will need that, even a community event, like if a a community liaison person would need to know how much money they're working with.
If I say thirty thousand dollars, that doesn't mean if JJ comes, we would give her group thirty or this other group thirty. It depends on the event. Like if JJ presents, we may say, hmm, that's like a ten thousand dollar outlay of our money. That's what we're willing to spend. But we, if a different group comes, says, I'm willing to do this, you might then say, okay, maybe thirty thousand, because that's a bigger event. I mean, are you just setting one number and that's it?
Well, yeah, I would say yes, we should set a number.
As the maximum?
As the ma- as as the amount. And then whatever needs to be supplemented, needs to be fundraised through whatever those channels need to look like. But we should only be making a commitment of set dollar amount and they have to do everything within that set dollar amount and then they understand what they have to fundraise.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. So like as Isaac was saying, it's just right off the bat, if you want X amount, number of tables and chairs, that's just what they cost. If you want um however many rides or blowups, that's just what they cost. And so, you know, I think if you still want rides and blowups and all that, you're going to pay that no matter who's running the event. So I think we just have to be mindful, even though we say this event will be toned down or scaled back, especially with not spending a ton on an event company, if if someone in the community does do it, there are still the same amount of dollar fixed costs checks that still need to be written. Um, so. But if there are are community members that are planning and putting on, there's not the cost to pay them to do it. Saying like it's free labor or anything, it's literally paying, I mean, but you're just paying the cost of the event. You're not paying.
So we we were about twenty, twenty percent, a little bit less than twenty percent for the coordination total?
I'm just, my concern is that if, you know, we come up with thirty thousand dollars and then somebody comes and proposes something very small, it doesn't even cost that. Are we telling them, you'll, we'll give you thirty? We, in that case, we say, no, that we'll give you ten, because that's what your event is. You're telling me based on the number of people, the stuff you're buying, or if they come and it's bigger, then we would, we would give them the thirty.
I think we should set our standards, like, I mean, our standards are, we want tables and chairs in a beer area, or we don't, or we do want X amount of rides.
I guess I, I guess I do have.
And that is going to hit our threshold of way more than ten thousand. I mean.
Yeah, I was just saying, do we really, it's if they're planning it, can we really tell them what to do?
Well, I guess that's my question though, too. Are we talking about, are you talking about getting someone in here that would run the event on the city's behalf? Or are we talking about handing this off to someone else and becoming a sponsor potentially? Because those are very different things.
That's what I was thinking on the various numbers. If we did hire uh an outfit, then.
And I guess based on what JJ had said, I thought she wanted to take it.
That was my, that was my understanding. Jeff is nodding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify?
Yeah.
When we say take it over, like just plan whatever you think would be um kind of in the best interest of the community or, okay, yeah, sorry.
What you're up against right now is time.
Yes. Thirty.
And there's not going to be time to do month-long decisions on an event. It's happening in the summer. And ideally, I see this as being an event before school lets out, because once school lets out, you can't get participation from the high school or the middle school. And I think that's a big failure of the events that we've had.
And I think JJ's, you know, thought is in that early mid-June.
Yeah.
I mean, from what I hear, I I'm not going to agree, but I think it makes sense. And so it's worth listening. And it would be one in her cases, she would run it, organize it with the library group or whatever groups they say, and then we would just be a sponsor. We can't tell them how many rides to have, but we can give them, we wanted something focused on this or we want to have, you know, this idea involved. And then they, but you're going to propose a pretty good detailed approach of what you guys want or can it can be.
Yes.
Like there still be food carts, it's still, you know.
And the themes and the sponsors that you have kind of lined up and the companies you're talking to and and it would be all a proposal. Or you go to a a Treadway-type company and say, we have about a thirty, we have a thirty thousand dollar budget. And we we would like something, you know, what can you present for that?
This is a little bit like an RFP process, right? So generally, very broad brush stroke, right? We put out a document, say, looking to do this work. Sometimes there's a dollar with it. We say, we'll do it for X dollars. One of the factors that we account for is economy, right? That's one of the things you look at. So you you can with a straight face say thirty thousand and it could be five for the library. That's that's one decision point that you can consider among all of these other things that come in. And so, you know, you're not necessarily committing yourself to say, yes, we're going to give up thirty thousand and there's, you know. That's not necessarily how it works. It's kind of to get get an idea and to give folks who who might not be as involved as the library or JJ who, and I mean, to be frank, they're here a lot. They know, they know us by first name. People coming for us don't. They'll need an idea of what what they should be trying to do to convince you as council to say, okay, we will back you on this. So I think a hard cap is going to be important and then just kind of seeing where the chips fall might. Is it going to be economy this year? Is it going to be the rides? I don't, that's not my decision-making bucket, but those are kind of the different factors.
Is the local planner Angela Wayman still around?
She was one, yeah. She she was one. She came in at, say, forty-five to fifty-five to plan the Centennial. I think Treadway was like five.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five hundred, she was forty-five thousand.
So I like if we were to.
There, the cost for that Treadway took out of the budget was eighty-five. She wanted forty-five in her pocket. It's the way her proposal was written. I.
And and that's because it, they took out from the documents that.
You wanted her fee was forty-five thousand.
Yeah, they took out twenty.
That was for the twenty twenty-three event.
So it's for the.
What event?
It's for the hundred-year event.
Yeah.
Some of those are payments back to them for things. So you have to separate the payments. So they covered us, so they would make payments to the graphic designer. We would reimburse them, but the actual management fee was eighty-five. But the the repayments were, made their actual invoices go higher.
Yeah, well, that's. This, uh, I've been part of some of the the city type of events. Um, I see that if, in my opinion, when the community is involved, uh, the members are involved, they tend to know people. Uh, JJ knows a lot of people, Suzie Wilson knows a lot of people, and they were just willing to get a lot of stuff donated. Uh, and and ask for people. They can call somebody and say, hey, and sponsorship. I think that we should use leaders in the community to make sure that we can have an event. Um, that's the other thing about, I think, when people were disconnected about the event, like it was a community event. Um, having more local, I know we don't have all of the variety of food in Staples, but it it does feel like, you know, I've. I got calls from some vendors or local restaurants saying, hey, I didn't know that they were having it. Why, I didn't get a call. So whether they did or not, it didn't feel like they were suited, so. Um, and I'm just, uh, I would propose just to call and keep it uh community-based. Whoever, if the library and JJ, I'm sure they can get support, other members to help you out. I think, I'm not sure, I think it's probably DC and part uh members, maybe they can also.
May I?
Yes.
Um, I think to your point, one of the things that's hard for government is we have to be objective to a T. So like, maybe that's benefit for a small community group is that they can just solicit local vendors because they don't have to have the transparency and oversight and accountability we have. Whereas when we say, hey, we want vendors, we have to be a little more open for everything. So like, well, it's a great example. We have a local toilet company. They came in like six thousand dollars higher than Treadway's events. Context, just just by pure, you know, regardless of the event coordinators, right? They have these different contracts. So we, with economy, right? Maybe uh maybe that is a selling point for a smaller group to do this work is that they could, more local, where we don't have that luxury sometimes. We have to, it's kind of like with the RFPs. Yeah, there's points in there for, you know, local vendors, but sometimes they just don't come in low enough. We are forced to take the lowest. That could be another benefit to the smaller.
Are we okay, are we okay with then inviting or do you guys feel that if we invited JJ and and then we'll talk about any other group? If you have a couple other people into like our first, one of our December meetings, make a proposal? You know, are we ready for November sixteenth or is that too soon?
I think that's really soon.
Twenty? Be the twentieth and, yeah, I think the only concern from our perspective is that it might be too soon for them. However, to, you know, to Jeff's point, it's already really late in the season to be planning something for the summer. So that's the other concern we have. I don't, you know, I think from a staff perspective, you know, there's no, you don't have any qualms about someone else doing the event. And, you know, if we can, it can be done for cheaper, that's great.
I think um.
But I think, you know, it's just the sort of the timing and kind of capacity issue that, you know, we have in terms of, if you know, if it gets handed over, then, you know, they are taking it on and we can sponsor it. But we can't really be there to.
JJ's, it's a smaller type of thing. I think June, I think they can do that still timeframe as she feels. It's only six months. But if we moved on a quick, if we were to do a bigger event through another planner, it would probably be August. I mean, whatever they propose, they'd have more time. But I'm thinking then December fourth, um, entertain, invite a couple people to the meeting.
I think December fourth is reasonable. Gives people a month to figure out a proposal if if we find people.
And start there and if if obviously there's a big problem, we have a meeting the next week.
Right, ask a couple clarifications before we done. You have a hard cap of dollars. There, I am going to, when I do call around folks, they're going to ask me, they're proposing, what are we, what are you looking at for money?
And are we still doing proposals? I guess this is back to my question, though. You're talking about hiring someone. That's what I mean, like, are we talking about hiring somebody or handing it off?
I I don't, it sounds like.
I think about hiring someone, I feel like, I mean, it's just a number, thirty thousand dollars out of our budget. If they want to somehow fundraise on their own, you know, sponsorships and fundraise, uh, our budget would be thirty thousand dollars.
Are you still talking about, so there's kind of two courses.
You'd have to provide, what can they do for thirty thousand dollars?
So is that, but is that hiring like a X event company over here or is that all, or is that being a sponsor to a small?
To me, that's hiring for a little bit bigger event. What can they provide for thirty thou- if they say, I could do it for eighty, so you'll give us thirty, we'll go find, we'll go get our own sponsors for fifty. Let them provide some, but our budget, we're only going to pay thirty out of our pocket.
Do you still want proposals from small community groups?
Yes, and then that, yeah, oh, yeah. To me, the thirty thousand would be a cap, like that's the most that we're going to spend if we felt it was warranted. But with, if JJ's group comes and they're, it's like, wow, that's ten thousand.
Yeah, I do have another clarifying question though, then. If if say Jeff, you know, and JJ come and they're like, okay, we can do this for thirty thousand. Are you saying that we as the city are hiring them to put on this event for the city or that then we're telling them, we'll give you thirty thousand for this event?
I know. See, to me, that that, to me, it's like, it's like either this, we hire a company and they tell us what they're going to, or we tell them what we kind of want.
Mr. Mayor. Can I stop you? Based upon the feedback that we received from uh the Parks and Rec and the Economic Development Committees and what I'm hearing from council is that it is more of a detriment to have an outside company run an event like this. It feels less community-based. They don't have local vendors. They're trying to remove that piece of the puzzle and they think that by having more local um organization um leadership, planning this event, that that would help get community into it. So I personally don't know if it's in our best interest to take the time to look for an outside company that we're going to pay to do this. I really think that, you know, in the past, there's been the Sauerkraut Festival, we've had other small things, the Powwow, that weren't all community-led, but that the city was just a sponsor of. Same with the PUD, same with, you know, other, other local agencies have been sponsors for. I personally would rather be a sponsor to a group that is willing to take this on. It's community-based, it's volunteer-based without paying, you know, a somebody's paycheck to put it on. Um, I'd rather just donate the money and have it be used directly for the event. That's my personal opinion. I think that that's kind of at the heart and spirit of what we've been trying to get to tonight. Um. I don't know. I think it's worth a conversation. We have community members who are open and willing to put themselves out there and do this. Amazing, incredible, thank you. That we do have a quick sit-down, like, what are you thinking? But we're just a sponsor, so we can't really tell you what to do, but here's some things that we've heard from the community that we still like. We we definitely, if you can make it, have it be free. We definitely, if you can make it, have a couple kid things. Definitely, if you can make it, have some music. If it needs to be one day, great. At this point, I'm really okay with the hands-off and I I see the look from staff too because we get all these, you know, all this input and do. because we get all these, you know, all this input and do this and do that. And I can even sit here, like, see their faces going, I still don't get what you want us to do. You know what I mean?
No, I'm good hand, no, I'm, I'm okay, we can hand it off.
You know what I mean, but like, you want us to use the company, you want us just.
Then how about instead of thinking of both, let's offer JJ and her group to come and present. Offer them November twentieth, if they're ready, cause it's soon, if they need more time.
I think she already has ideas, it says right here, JJ has lots of ideas.
Yeah, and I just talked to her, too, and I think she could be ready to have a really good outline of everything by that date. And then we can listen to that, and if we, we like it, go. And then if we think we need, we don't, then we, we, we look at the next, yes.
This is, of course, I have to ask Jeff. Jeff, would this, with the, uh, library take this on as an organization? Say, we, uh, as the council, they, uh, donate thirty thousand dollars, cause I'm just taking your, your amount to the library, and you will take that on with your project?
Yeah, we've, um, talked about it informally, one-on-one, one-on-one with board members. And I think they're willing to take it on. Basically, the library would be the fiscal agent, so.
For the grants and the five-oh-one C threes and, and then she'd probably be hitting up the community club again and farmer's market and all those.
Should maybe be involved, you know?
Well, the farmer's market would be a fixture of it, too, because any event that the library sponsors would have to take place here because of our liability. We'd have to get separate liability assurance to move it.
So right off the bat, the event would not be at Veterans' Park?
That's correct.
Good to know.
And there will be no, um, beer garden?
I still, I like to hear the presentation, understand I can't compete, parrot, it's a whole, it would be a whole different thing.
Right?
What?
You can still close the street.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Street party, like it.
And there is, I mean, there's room over there, room along the road, I mean, there's room for different things. You're gonna have a fly fishing guy, you're gonna have a rock wall guy, you're gonna have a equestrian.
Hammerfah.
It's outdoor fah.
I have looked at the, the rental stuff, see what I can source locally.
Kayak, I, our athletic director asked about our adventure fest, cause they wanna do a big golf tournament the day before, next year. And I told them we're talking about it, so we'll, you know, the golf people, it'll be outdoor, something outdoor.
No.
Horses and equestrian and kayaks.
So we're changing the theme, the theme didn't match, I'm confused.
It's up to you, if, um, if we wanna ask JJ to come and present and see what she has to present and, um, and go from there.
And it would go through the library?
That's her, her proposal would be.
That would be, yeah, because you need an entity that, yeah, is gonna be the fiscal agent, it will have the insurance coverage, all the things in place, that, that's always been the hardship and why.
Just a sponsorship.
And why the city had taken it over these last few years, cause there wasn't really an entity that they wanted it.
I think the dollar amount, based on what they're asking for, what they want, we would be giving a dollar amount. And then if, if we just, we're not ready, um, then we'll, we'll get something else.
We'll be discussing this at board meeting next week, the library board meeting is a.
Thank you, Jeff.
Sense? Moving on.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, you Isaac, appreciate your, I, I enjoy it. Okay, December, November sixth, so we have on, ready a planning commission meeting on November ninth, seven PM. November tenth, in honor of Veterans' Day, our offices will be closed. Eleven, uh, November eleventh is Veterans'. November sixteenth, Thursday, EDC meeting at noon, Parks and Rec at six PM. Our next council meeting, November twentieth, six PM, we have a work session, seven PM council meeting. Thanksgiving is November twenty-third, the offices close. Please enjoy yourself, and we're also closed on November twenty-fourth. Oh, on the calendar, city update, city manager Alex Rains.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to thank the police department for putting on the Halloween drive-through. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Isaac, I was gonna ask, but Police Chief Lugal, anything?
Not a lot, I've been telling you guys the same stuff for the last, uh, few meetings. Officer McFarland is gonna start the academy next Monday. Um, Officer Bosso's coming back, gonna finish up F, F here, I'm in a shadow phase. And then, um, as the report says, we're gonna be covering two shifts fully, and then by January, we're gonna rearrange the hours a little. So slowly moving forward, I'm sorry, it's the same stuff, you know, but we're getting.
We don't hear from you or about you, that's a good thing, unfortunately, I mean. Have you, have we had with the agreement with the shares that we've, have we used them for any shifts or any?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're doing, so, maybe some dates that we're gonna be using them, but.
Thank you. Counselor Miller?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Counselor Jacobs?
He's looking down. Uh, no, I don't have anything, thank you.
Appreciate it, Counselor Friends?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you, keep going, Counselor Santiago?
Just one again, just mentioned that, uh, it's honor, um, America, uh, Native American Month in November.
Thank you, Sir Hope.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
And then easy.
Hey.
That your?
Let's go.
Counselor, pre- council president Grayson?
Okay, um, thank you to the police department for putting on the Halloween drive-through, really appreciate it. Did you really drive through and get candy? No, you didn't, see, no. Great bags, again, Timmy Sue always nails it on the bags, my kids love them. Tomorrow, we have a updated traffic safety committee meeting that we've included some representatives from the school district for. Talk about the crosswalk across the highway, um, by the middle school. We have interest in that, they have interest in that, um, they also have a couple, um, entry and exit points that they'd like to bring up, that we've already, over the years, talked about in traffic safety. So just will be nice to have us all in the same room and finally have some of the same discussions together, about some things regarding the school district and traffic safety. I have my ballot in the car, don't forget to vote and turn it in, and then, oh, sorry.
Everything.
And then, um, as the mayor mentioned on the calendar, Veterans' Day is coming up. I had the pleasure of working, um, with first graders today, we talked about Veterans' Day and our freedoms, and, um, the activity was, I can do this, um, because of you, or something like, because of you, I can do this. And so we talked about the sacrifices that, um, have been made from veterans, and it was very sweet, like, I can go to my friend's house, or I can go to Fred Meyer whenever I want, or I can go camping outside. And really talked about how, when you live in other communities and other countries, that's not always the case. Sometimes you just have to shelter down in your home, and you can't see your friends, or you can't go to the store. So that was, it wasn't too dark of a conversation, but it was very, um, lovely to see the kids, um, embrace the small things, going to school and not taking those things for granted because of the sacrifices that our military has made.
Thank you. I do have one, since you were in windy city having fun. I did get to work at the Fall Festival at Grant Watts last Saturday night, that was a lot of fun, working with the kids. Thank you, Police Chief, for Halloween town. I, the last several Halloweens, I've lived or been away and not able to hand out candy. So this is the first one in a long time I was able to be home and have a lot of trick-or-treaters, so that was really nice. Um, and I had a sneak preview of Whoville next door. It's really coming along really nice and should open up December second, so that should be really fun. Uh, so really looking forward to that. There is a break, I think a veterans breakfast, probably at the high school, probably Friday morning. So I'll be over there. And safety, traffic safety meeting tomorrow. Other than that, um, I think that's all I have for tonight, we'll be in New York.